And you work together to defend what you love. So that's what we're here for tonight. We're here to talk about this issue. Now, when we first, when this first came up, I read about this in the newspaper. I had, I didn't even know what a data center was. But no one showed up for the public comments on it. And I guess they caught us napping or so on it. Now, I feel like tonight is why we should have shown up. I'm not blaming anybody. I'm sure everything was posted and everything about that. But I feel like the other side of this issue needs to be heard. And that's what we're here for tonight. To educate on the whole issue going on. Now, tonight, please, if you could, we are going to hold the questions until the end because we want to make sure that our speakers get a chance to give their entire presentation. Uh, yeah, this is the first event that I personally have held at the library. And you know, out of the events I've held, some places will run you right out at seven thirty. Some places might let us linger on till about eight. We'll stay, you know, as long as they let us. I'll compensate if the library closes today. We have the room booked till seven thirty. It just depends on the library. But please, when you get, when we get to the point where, you know, Dr. Sharma is ready to open up for questions, uh, please try to ask as succinct and as brief a question as you can because we want to make sure that more people get to ask their questions. And then, of course, she takes as much time as she, you know, needs to, to answer. So without any further ado, I would like to introduce our master of ceremonies who, you know, just started when I asked him right after he finished his environmental science degree to look into this issue for me. And he has taken this ball and ran with it. I pretty much just been the advisor since then. So please welcome Gage Bailey. He will be your head guy.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all so much for coming out because moments like these, in spite of the issues at hand, moments like these are beautiful where people can come together. And we know when something this big is facing us, we can face it together. And I'm honored to, to be a part of this, to do all the work that's been done so far to try and figure out what's going on in our community. And I'm so blessed that you all are here tonight to be a part of that. So first and foremost, I'd like to introduce our first speaker, Dr. Amy Sharma of Science for Georgia. She's going to talk to us more about data centers, what they are, and give you the information that we need going forward. Thank you all so much.
Thanks for getting over there. Hey, y'all. All right, uh, I'll hold the mic. It's really nice to meet y'all. Happy, happy Thursday. Thanks for having us down here. This is a beautiful library. So I don't know, I hear it's new, so it's really nice. So thank you, huge thank you to the library for letting us use their space. Uh, okay, great, it's working. My name's Amy Sharma. I'm the executive director of Science for Georgia. In past life, I used to build, uh, chips for IBM. So when data centers started showing up in Georgia, it was kind of the perfect storm of things that are happening, that are impacting our citizens, things that science can help out with, and also I can read the papers and understand what they're saying. So it's a lot of fun. But tonight, we're going to really talk to you guys about what's happening and what they're planning for La Grange. Uh, I'm going to go through what data centers are. Um, Chris from the Chattahoochee Riverkeeper is going to go through the water impacts of these centers. Um, and then our good friend Mark is going to talk about the kind of financial aspects. Um, and then we're going to close with what you can do about it because you all showed up today and showing up is step one of making something awesome happen. Uh, so what's coming for La Grange? Um, this is what we know about right now. Uh, there's an eight billion Project Pegasus. It's the red circle right there, the old Gino plan. And then there's the nine point seven billion Project West is down there. Um, and then there's, in fact, um, two other things possibly. So, uh, what we know about Pegasus is, uh, the city council seems to be pretty pro on this center. They've already broke ground. It's an eight billion investment. Um, they're getting a fifty dot, fifty percent tax abatement for the next twenty years. Yeah, uh, your school system agreed to that, too. Um, the power starts at fifty megawatts and will grow to four hundred megawatts. That is twenty-two thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand homes. I looked it up. Uh, you're, the, La Grange has a population of thirty thousand people total. Uh, the water estimate is about the usage of four thousand to thirty-three thousand people. Um, Project West, uh, the city council refused to annex the land for this project, which has pretty much declared it dead, but it's more in like some sort of zombie zone because they keep talking about it. But it's way less of a threat than Project Pegasus. There's a new one that just popped up called Project Crow. It's a hundred million dollar investment with thirty jobs. Um, other things, uh, the Lee Comkey Sauce Plant is also coming in La Grange. Um, and they're going to use seven point three billion gallons of water a year as well. Um, these are where the new transmission lines will have to go to power these things. It's the, that dotted black and white line there kind of running through. And then, uh, this is what's being called the Georgia International Business Park. All right, so what's a data center?
How big is that park?
That's the great question that I don't know the answer to because I forgot to write it down. Wait, I heard an answer?
Ten thousand acres.
Ten thousand acres. All right, um, so data centers are great. So y'all have cell phones, right? You all store pictures of your friends and your cats in the cloud. Uh, data centers make that happen. They also support research breakthroughs. Uh, ChatGPT exists solely because of data centers. Um, and also we brought this on ourselves. The average house has twenty-one connected devices. If you think about it, right, we have so many things that are connected right now and they're all stored in cloud and data centers house the cloud. Um, but there's like nothing else we've seen before. They're like these giant warehouses and they have a bunch of computers in them doing all their little computer things to hold all this data and a ton of networking devices and a bunch of cooling systems. Because this many, this much equipment in one small space gets very, very hot. You know how when your laptop sits on your lap, it gets really hot? Imagine you multiply that by a million. And so, and they cool these with water. So this is what is going on. Um, this is a large investment of money and land and resources for about fifty jobs. So like, I know people were excited when the Hyundai plant was coming to Georgia because that was like six hundred jobs. And if you get six hundred jobs in a factory, then you're getting all the follow-up jobs with the schools and the hospitals and the Applebee's. You're going to employ less than your average McDonald's at one of these places. So this is not a job maker for La Grange. Um, other things that happen, uh, depending on their noise and light pollution, um, it, they're giant, giant warehouses. So if they don't grade the land properly, you've got like a water runoff of flooding problem. Uh, when the power goes out, they turn on their like hundred diesel generators, which is a little bit smoggy. Um, and then it's a huge strain on your water resources, lots of tree cover. Um, and power, they use so much power. And we get, the way we generate power in Georgia, it uses a lot of water. So it's like a huge hit on water for multiple factors. Um, and I just, uh, this happened to our friends in Fayette County. They needed so much power into the new QTS facility that was going in that Georgia Power exercised their eminent domain. These are people's front yards that they put those giant poles in. The people of Fayette were not told this was happening to them. Just Georgia Power showed up one morning with like a digger. Um, so this, the amount of power these things need requires a lot of new power infrastructure. Uh, Chris is going to come talk about water.
Family's here with me. All right, um, good evening. Thanks, folks, for being here. Uh, my name is Chris Meganello. I'm Chattahoochee Riverkeeper's Water Policy Director. Uh, Chattahoochee Riverkeeper, for folks that don't know us, we're an environmental, nonprofit, constitutional organization. Uh, our job is to make sure there's enough clean water in the Chattahoochee River and here locally at West Point Lake for all the communities that need it, uh, from the headwaters up near Helen, Georgia, down here to Columbus and all points south in Georgia and Alabama. We are not a metro Atlanta-focused organization. Uh, we work throughout the whole river basin in Georgia and Alabama, upstream to downstream. So, uh, that's who we are. Sorry, I didn't update that slide. I gave that, uh, gave a talk like this yesterday to some law students. Um, so, um, we do all the work throughout the Chattahoochee River Basin, uh, which is this kind of basin in blue piece here. Again, just to make sure everybody's got it, who needs it, um, because the river's got to support all this stuff, right? Over five million people, um, that is throughout the whole river basin, um, as best as the census data we can work with. Uh, but the river's got to support all this stuff, uh, energy production, wastewater, drinking water, agriculture, all sorts of stuff. So Amy's talked a little bit about data centers, but in some ways, I just want to kind of show this picture here just to help you understand a little bit more about like what the footprint looks like. Because data centers are industrial facilities and operations. Um, I, I think that it's, some people just like to think of it as these warehouses filled with computers, like maybe an Amazon warehouse is filled with boxes. But it's, it's much more, uh, kind of a much larger industrial footprint. Um, the, uh, what you see in the red circles here, uh, this is a picture on the left of the Google's data center in Douglas County, Georgia, which is north of here, upriver. Um, Google's facility is one of the largest and the first that came into the state in kind of mid-two thousands. But we've, we've had data centers in Georgia really since, I mean, data centers initially were in nineteen eighties and nineties. You can think of this like this, but telecommunications industry was, was functioning off of, and they've evolved and they've grown as the industry has changed. Google's was basically the largest facility in the state, um, you know, in the, again, in the early two thousands. And, and now the ones that are coming in that we're talking about, Pegasus, West and others, these are just gigantic facilities and just kind of, in some ways dwarf Google's facility. But they're all, have a lot of the same infrastructure components and impacts. So what we see in red there and the hoops, that's, that's what power comes into the facility, right? They need hundreds of megawatts. And like, when we're talking about megawatts, we're talking about like, some of these facilities are going to need a thousand megawatts, right? That's how much energy plant Yates basically produces, right? So like one data center can suck up all the energy that a single power facility or a single generation facility can make, right? So that's how large these things are. And so the, the red hoops, that's like this, kind of think about the energy infrastructure that comes with it. In the, um, the green, those were the, like, that's the backup generators that, um, that Amy was talking about. And some of these facilities will have hundreds of them. And those are prepared, these facilities have to operate twenty-four, seven, and three-sixty-five. Power goes out, we all need to keep, still watch our cat videos, I guess. But that's the idea is that these facilities have to function twenty-four, seven. And, you know, certainly I kind of say that in jest, but, um, because data centers also support like the doctor reading my medical chart, right? So they do have to function twenty-four, seven, three-sixty-five, so they have these banks of hundreds of backup generators. In the blue hoops, that's in some ways the direct impacts of water on the facility. This is the cooling, like cooling technology that they need to keep these computers cool and all the functions, um, operating. So the cooling technologies, they can vary, uh, so that can change how much water the facilities need. Um, the most intensive, uh, kind of high water footprint are called evaporative cooling. Um, and so just for example, there's a proposed data center up in Coeida County. It's called Project Sale, folks who are familiar with it. I've been talking a lot with folks there. That facility, they think is going to need, full buildout, it would need about six million gallons of water a day going into the facility. And then the facility would generate two million gallons a day of wastewater. So if you do math, six million in, two million out, what happens if four million in? Evaporates up into the air for evaporative cooling. So it has a very significant, uh, water footprint. So how much water is that? Well, right now, Coeida County uses about six to seven million gallons of water a day. And so this one facility, if it gets fully built out, would essentially use all the water the community's using today. But the thing about that particular county is they've, over the last ten years, they've been building to expand their wastewater, excuse me, their, their drinking water system. So eventually they're, they're in the process of building a new intake on Chattahoochee River. Uh, and so this, that community will eventually have a fully built out system at like twenty-seven million gallons a day. But still, this one facility could use about, you know, a third or fourth of the overall capacity. So anyway, the cooling technologies, the cooling technologies of these facilities dictates how much water they demand, which can be quite significant. Of course, you can't bring water into the facility, which is, I've got this turquoise line here. You can't bring water in unless it's also going out. So every, all these facilities have to have wastewater and super service as well. Google is unique. It is a unicorn. They actually use reclaimed wastewater from the adjacent, from the adjacent, uh, water treatment system. Um, but it's the only one in the state that does this. And a lot of the proposed data centers that are coming in are not proposing this anyway. So a lot of people might say, oh, Google's a great example. The trick is that it's to do this kind of wastewater reuse for the cooling purposes. It's very expensive, it takes a lot of coordination, inter-jurisdictional, remember of, of, of understanding and whatnot. And so it is possible to do waste, to use reclaimed wastewater in the cooling process. Um, nonetheless, um, the facility still uses a tremendous amount of water anyhow. So this is just kind of a general sense of all the infrastructure that comes with a large data center, particularly when we're talking about these new ones. Energy, it's important to think about, um, what, what you're looking at right here is a graph of how much energy Georgia Power thinks they're going to need, like, all the way up to twenty forty. The blue line in twenty twenty-two, Georgia Power thought they're going to need eighteen gigawatts of energy. Gigawatts are like, it's like unfathomable how much I could be talking about. The point I'm trying to make with this is simply that Georgia Power, in like three years, because of data center demand, realized they were going to have to go from eighteen gigawatts to twenty-eight gigawatts in the future. So it's just like, it's, it's, it's hard to get your head around, it's hard for me to get my head around how much energy. But I'm only using this to simply show that even the power company, the big power company in the state, they're anticipating a tremendous increase of demand of energy to supply the data centers that are all showing up. And it's like significant increases. We're talking like you have to build like multiple nuclear reactors to go from eighteen to twenty-eight gigawatts. So again, the kind of data center demand and interest is showing up is, to some degree, I would argue unprecedented in terms of, of what it is presenting to Georgia and its communities, um, uh, right now. Let's see. So how much does maybe a data center use? As I said, they can use, you know, millions of gallons a day. The, the, kind of the data I have here is from, um, couple news reports. Now, the single word email that I dictate to AI and chatbot could require seventeen ounces of water. So if you do that hundred-word email once a week for a year, you're using, you know, gallons and gallons of water. Right? So the idea also here is that, you know, if you dictate a request into an AI search, then it can use more electricity and therefore more water than simply just typing your request in. So I'm showing this in a sense to kind of help us understand that not only do I have my phone over there and I use Office three-sixty-five and I have Google Docs, I'm using data centers. But if you're using AI, you have an impact on energy and water damage. So we all have digital footprints and we, um, all are a part of this. In terms of where the water is coming from in these facilities, um, here in, in, in La Grange, your source of water is West Point. And this, this is a, this is a drawing from, um, it's an EPA, it's pretty basic, but it's also, it's, it's a good demonstration of generally where communities get their water. All of our water is coming from a reservoir, in this case from this point. It comes out of the reservoir, it goes into a drinking water plant, it gets treated for drinking purposes, maybe there are storage tanks, and then the water goes to a customer in this, in this case, I've got a data center drawn in here, just like I could also be a customer there as well. The data centers use the water, uh, whatever's left over goes to a wastewater treatment plant, it's treated to, um, state standards, and then it's discharged back into, uh, the source of water, which here would be Long Canyon Creek, I believe, and then back into the river downstream. This is simply to kind of demonstrate that on the one hand, data centers show up and they're like, I'm just another water customer. The data centers show up and they say, I'm just another water customer, right? But again, the volumes that they're talking about are very different, uh, over the long run. And it's, and I'll say it again, also, when it comes to wastewater, all of them are also sending back to a wastewater treatment plant, um, except for, again, the exception of the rule. This here, um, I get a lot of questions. People always like trying to figure out how to make sense of how much water and energy facilities are using. They're always kind of asking for comparisons, and I find it really hard to do. And so I ended up with lots of different ways of comparisons. What I'm trying, the comparison I'm trying to make here is similar to what I kind of mentioned a little earlier. All the way on the left is a picture of Project Sale, again, up in Coeida County. That particular project will be nine different data center buildings, nine hundred megawatts of electricity at full buildout. And they will have a consumptive use or evaporate up into the air, about four million gallons of water a day. All right, so that's one data center. Four million gallons of consumptive use, nine hundred megawatts. Plant McDonough, natural gas plant owned by Georgia Power outside of Atlanta on the Chattahoochee River, that plant's consumptive use is seven million gallons a day, right? So about twice as much as that data center. When you think about that power plant, powers Atlanta and the metro elite region in terms of like, think about the number of people it's supporting, the industry it's supporting, um, and that particular, uh, natural gas facility generates about twenty-five hundred megawatts, right? So again, one data center, about a thousand megawatts, natural gas plant, twenty-five hundred. So again, just kind of thinking about, try to understand what these facilities look like in comparison to one another. And they also include a power plant, the plant Vogel, it's over on the far western side of the state on Savannah River. One nuclear unit consumes about twelve to fifteen million gallons a day and it generates forty-six hundred megawatts. So again, data center about nine hundred to a thousand megawatts, a single, uh, nuclear reactor is about a thousand as well. So just for comparison, thinking about how these things make sense together. All of this data, the Coeida County example, that's from public reporting and from the actual developers themselves. The water use data here from Georgia Power's plants, Georgia Power's power plants is from the State Environmental Agency, uh, which is, has publicly available data. Another way to think about comparisons, KIA uses about a million gallons a day, right? A city of about five thousand people, about a million gallons a day. The new Hyundai Meta Plant that is being constructed down in Coaster, Georgia, that's about four million a day. Uh, a paper plant, sixty-eight million gallons a day. City of Atlanta, they're permitted for a hundred and fifty-nine, they don't actually use that much. And then a power plant, again, permanent, two hundred and thirty-three. So again, the data centers are going to need anywhere from, you know, a million to, um, to, uh, six million gallons of water a day. So again, just another way to think about comparisons. In terms of other impacts on water, um, Chattahoochee Riverkeeper has a long history of dealing with large-scale land development. This is a picture, um, Kyle A. Henry here is in the audience tonight, was flying drone to West Point a few years ago, saw this plume of water, of mud in the Chattahoochee River just above West Point. Uh, you know, tracked it back upstream in Alabama where there was a solar field that had been developed. And what was, what we kind of figured out over some research was that it was, you know, over time, it rained up here in Alabama, that was the color of the river. And it was because the, the developer, the operator, uh, construction company of the solar field, it basically had not followed the required soil and erosion control measures that they're supposed to in the state of Alabama. United States Environmental Protection Agency eventually stepped in and, you know, you found the developers' construction and whatnot, um, and kind of addressed their, uh, non-compliance. But I show this in part when I'm talking to folks about what large-scale land development can look like and what it can result in if people don't do the right thing at the source. We have worked with developers, kind of been able to look at their plans sometimes and help them understand what they can do right and do better. Uh, we have that expertise in-house. Um, and so we know that if folks do the right thing, then we don't end up with this. And so we offer ourselves out, um, to meet with folks, uh, that are doing large, uh, landscape development, whether or not it's, you know, a warehouse or something else. So we have been in communication with, uh, with some, with some other developers that are proposing data centers, try to see if we can have some conversations ahead of time to make sure that we do the right thing off, right off of that. So that's what I have on, on water, on both the kind of the water demand of the facility, water impacts and how the water system works, um, and potential impacts off-site as well. And I'll be happy to take any questions when I'm done.
All right, Mark Woodall, the legislative chair of the Sierra Club is advertised. Uh, the Sierra Club is one of the nation's oldest and largest environmental groups founded in eighteen ninety-two by John Muir. Uh, we've got a local group here in La Grange chaired by Sam Brath, Uncle, I saw him there, there he is, Sam. So you guys are welcome to come to our monthly meetings over there at St. Mark's. We still wait at St. Mark's. Uh, so I want to show up here about once every thirty years to complain about something. Talking about the sustainability path. Uh, thirty years ago, Ray Anderson with Interface, uh, they were selling a bunch of carpet tiles in New York City and New Jersey, and they had all this carpet, the old carpet, and they wanted to bring it back to La Grange and burn it in the giant carpet in Citroen, which has been incredibly nasty. Uh, so we were over here opposing that in ninety-four, somewhere along in there. But then Ray Anderson read The Ecology of Converse by Hawken, Paul Hawken, and had an epiphany and decided he was going to make carpet to his business sustainable. So, uh, that's pretty amazing, carpet, you know, not big old, uh, products, byproducts in carpets. So, uh, it's a big job, they've been doing a great job, and Ray Anderson, you know, has gone down as a great environmentalist after a rough start there. So since then, I mean, La Grange, you guys have got a lot of the industry. I didn't realize it till I started going to your Development Authority meetings, uh, which I'm probably the only citizen there, that's the way it works. But they're going for the money. I mean, if you follow the money, that's always a good idea. And our problem, Sierra Club's problem with these data centers, this invasion we're seeing in Georgia, Big Jack, and now I speak with him. and now Spackleton, is it's killing all our projects toward clean energy. The Sierra Club voted, I guess the board voted 20 years ago to make stopping catastrophic climate change our big priority. And to do that, you gotta slow down burning fossil fuel. And we've been doing a pretty good job of that in Georgia. Actually, we've got over 5,000 megawatts of solar. We love solar, I'm sorry, I just picked the name, I'm Kate Helen. So now, as Chris alluded to briefly, Georgia Power has come in with a request for 10,000 megawatts of more capacity. And megawatts, you're gonna hear a lot of talk about megawatts. One megawatt is about 400 houses and a school, is one way to figure it out. Orlando, Florida is about 1,200 megawatts. And that $35 billion you paid for Vogel 3 and 4 of those new digs, that was 2,200 megawatts. So give you a little scale. So this certification for this 10,000 megawatts is in front of the Georgia Public Service Commission. And remember, Development Authority places. And it's got over 3,600 megawatts of new gas combined cycle. And that's going to use a lot of water. And the estimated price tag is $15 billion. So who's gonna pay? Who's gonna pay that $15 billion? We suspect it's gonna be me and you. Now, the Public Service Commission is talking big about making the data centers pay. But that has not been the way it's working out. Amy was talking about that giant QTS facility in Fayetteville where the folks getting their yards can deal for all the power lines running all the way over there to Wansley on the Chattahoochee, upstream here. So there's a lot of land condemning going on. There's a lot of fossil fuel burning going on. And your folks here in La Grange were doing pretty good. I mean, the first I heard of data centers in La Grange was this Spackleton guy, Harrelson, I think this guy owns 1,000 acres down here, outside the city of La Grange city limits. And he just popped up with a press release and said it was gonna be a $9.7 billion data center. And nobody with the city had heard anything about it. The Development Authority didn't even send the, I think it was such a great idea, they didn't talk to them. So the city council refused to annex that land. So that was a good move on their part, that was at the end of March. But then we hear about this other data center, Pegasus, $8 billion. Don't know who it is. Your Development Authority has already voted to give away almost $200 million in school taxes to these people. Don't know who they are, but I think it might be 400 megawatts. We don't know how much water it's gonna use. Yeah, here it is up here. And they're giving this all on the state of Georgia, Development Authorities are. And like we were saying earlier, it's like a McDonald's or something. But it's, your Development Authority is getting a fee of $8 million on that $8 million bond, so. And it's typical, it's gonna be paying the new taxes. They're taking, they're taking all this stuff off the property rolls. Now, if city and county officials did that, they'd go to jail. But the Development Authorities have set up to get around the gratuitous clause. And this is in your Georgia Constitution, Article 3, Section 6, Paragraph 6. Says basically that the General Assembly, and this includes the cities and counties as well, they can't give away money basically. They gotta pay fair market value. They can't just give people taxes. So the Development Authorities under the law, they can do quite a few things. But really, what they're doing is they're figuring out the consens. And I'm not against taking on the consensus, but they're getting a little carried away when they give away $200 million, almost, to somebody we don't know who it is. So that's what's going on with your project Pegasus. They're out there driving away, holding construction is at 411 Pegasus Parkway. About all you can see is the sign. So continuing to follow the money. I mean, this MOU, as approved by the School Board, $8 billion, five phases. The authority will acquire the site and then they'll lease it back to the county. That's how they get off the property tax rules. And like I said, $8 million fee. So 400 megawatts, I mean, what is it, La Grange use? The city, the residents, a lot less than that. So our deal is, the Sierra Club understands that we, now we've got smartphones and laptops and all these other things, that we can't just say, no data centers. Well, we can say, if you don't take one, don't harm anything else, like the water supply, the energy system, the planet. We've got about 12 things that should satisfy. And these folks have been taken in by the Development Authority. We don't know who, I mean, the real reason might be Google, we don't know. So the Development Authority, La Grange's Development Authority is composed of mostly elected people. Who they are, Frank Prory, retired banker, Susan Black, J.K. Bartlett, retired former state representative, Carvin Adams, former Calaway Foundation President, Peter Redd, Shad Little, Chip Penn, current Calaway Foundation President, Curtis Brown, Western Kentucky Tech, Martin Mitchell, and Darby Pippen, who are actually elected officials. Patrick Boy, the city manager, who's also the vice chair of MEA, the Municipal Electric Authority, which has a total of 2,300 megawatts statewide. So this is almost 20% of the whole MEA load, so.
And so as a reminder, 130 megawatts, La Grange, the city of La Grange uses 130 megawatts of power.
Right, thank you.
And Darby Pippen is no longer on the Development Authority.
Okay, well, I know she hasn't been there the last two minutes and some guy with a beard, who's that guy with a beard? There's a new guy showed up Tuesday. Yeah, so we call these Development Authorities the shadow governments because they operate in secrecy. I mean, I think it's, you can say a lot of things about secrecy. It's an enemy of democracy, there's a lot of quotes about secrecy. But I don't think they have to give away $200 million of your money by asking somebody or telling somebody, or at least knowing who it is. Anyway, appreciate y'all turning out.
All right, so now y'all are excited to get something done. So we can fight back, right? Y'all showed up today to find out more about this, so let's figure out what we can do about this. So there's kind of four pillars to make them be better neighbors. One is to require full transparency. Obviously, you are in a situation right now where you have almost zero transparency. You don't know what's coming, you don't know how much they're gonna use, you don't know who's getting money, who's not getting money, right? It's you have zero transparency about this, but you do know that they've got $200 million of your tax revenue. So full transparency would be a good start. State oversight is a thing that all of us up here at this table, maybe not Gage, because he was just the masters of ceremony, but Science for Georgia has been working with many people to kind of figure out how we can make sure there's better coordination. So that way, if y'all take all this, like, if we all, if every data center takes all the water that they're asking for, we're not gonna have any crops. So we gotta start thinking about this a little bit bigger picture. We need to pay companies, companies have to pay, pay to play, right? Like those, if they're going to be taking over, like, we need to double our power generation capacity as a state in the next 10 years for them. My power bills have gone through the roof this summer. I don't know if y'all, it's nothing to do with your air conditioning. It's everything to do with the fact that Plant Vogel turned on and they can now recover that fee. None of that includes this data center. So if your power bills have doubled this summer, imagine what's gonna happen in the next like five or 10 years. And then we really need to incentivize efficiency, right? Like, I get that we want to woo big employers for our towns, like, I love that, right? But they are not big employers. So we should not be incentivizing them the same way we are incentivizing the Hyundai plant, right? We need to incentivize these guys to like, yeah, sure, you can have a tax break if you use a lot less water or if you build new playgrounds for our schools or you do whatever. And you guys are in the driver's seat here. So as the city of La Grange, you guys should come up with your like Christmas, like, your list for Santa that you want for La Grange and write that all down. These guys have billions of dollars. Get that money out of them. All right, at the state level, there are three bills currently active in the Georgia General Assembly. Senate Bill 34, Pay to Play. Senate Bill 94, Reestablishment of the Computer Consumer Utility Council. We are one of four states that does not have a consumer advocate on their Public Service Commission. So those five guys on the Public Service Commission that set all your power bill rates, not a single one of them is representing you. And then HB 528, the High Use Facilities Transparency Act. Again, we don't know where these things are, how much water they're taking, how much. They keep saying we're producing millions of jobs. Where? No one knows how much taxes they're paying because they're getting all these weird abatements. Like, it'd be really great to get some transparency. At the local level, this is where y'all come in, right? There's local ordinances. You all can pass a moratorium to slow the spread, right? There's two, maybe three, maybe four coming through La Grange. A ton of cities and counties around Georgia have already passed 90-day moratoriums to be like, timeout, what are we doing, right? And then regulations and requirements to ensure they're good neighbors. Y'all got this handout. Look at that, make a good data center ordinance. All the things that should be in your county ordinance around if they show up. Make them pay, make them have a stormwater management plan. Chris didn't mention this, but what happens when we're in another drought? Sure, the hospitals need to keep using the same amount of water because they're keeping us alive, but do you guys not get any water so the data center can still operate at full capacity? Right now, yes, because we have zero water use agreements with them, right? So you need to think real hard about like, yeah, it's been, we've been doing pretty well for water in about, for the past 10 years here in Georgia, but what happens when we hit that next drought? None of these things have been considered. And they all claim that they're important facilities that must run 24/7, 365 days a year. Do they? I mean, I love a good Netflix until, but like, really? So we really, like, there's a bunch of things. And also, they can leave. So do you want to make them require a bond? So if they leave in under 15 years, you get all that tax revenue back? Or that hunk of a shell becomes something useful to your community and doesn't just end up as like an empty warehouse, right? Like, there's a lot of things to consider and there's a lot of things to ask them for. So what can y'all do right now, right? Like, y'all are excited, let's get some, all right. So you can attend public meetings on data centers, so you guys did something. Let's all be proud of ourselves, y'all showed up, right? I just realized, it's like kickoff of the NFL season. So thank y'all for skipping kickoff Thursday, for coming here. But we have this data center organizing toolkit our friends at the Sierra Club put in together. Check it out, I think it's linked on one of these pages, guidance. There's, sorry, look at this, it's like handout time. We have the name of all of your public officials. In theory, they work for you, right? So step one, don't show up at our house because that's illegal. All right, step two, send them an email, shoot them a phone call, be like, what is going on here? I would like more transparency. I have questions, what is this, what is this doing for the city of La Grange? What is this doing for me, right? And we even put some sample questions on you, on here, for you to ask them. The reason they're getting away with this is because they think no one's paying attention.
Where's the county in all of this?
What?
Where does the county fit in this whole thing?
The Coney?
County.
Oh, the county, sorry, 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 sorry. I was like ponies, I love ponies. So I don't, yeah, so this is.
Where's the first step, aren't they?
The county and the city are the first steps. So I'm unfamiliar with your government's structure down here in La Grange, I'm sorry. But like, the county, for sure, state representatives from Tru County, the La Grange Development Authority, like, these people report to both the, there is the city council and there is the county. So neither one of them, they're all in on it, I guess is a great way to say it. They're all, they're all really excited about these data centers because the data center people came down and bought them some really nice stinks and they got really excited about it because they get to say, we're bringing $9 billion of investment to La Grange. Except when you used to bring $9 billion of investment, that you were building like a factory or a facility that was gonna employ 500 La Grangians. Now they're bringing $9 billion of investment to La Grange to take all your water. So that's kind of what you need to start asking your government officials about. This is great. The Sierra Club Local Chapter has legislative liaisons. Hannah couldn't make it here tonight because she's super sick. If you want to speak up at a community meeting or go talk to one of your city council people, Hannah is actually happy to talk you through that, right? Because sometimes it's like, I don't know about you, five years ago, when I first started working in Science for Georgia, I naively was like, sure, I'll make some public confidence in front of the Georgia General Assembly. And it was like the most terrifying experience of my life. And I was like, well, I gotta do it, I said I would, right? So like, if you're like, how do I get over that? Hannah can help you out, I can help you out, one of us can help you out to like come up with a thing to say so you can go up there and feel confident in what you're gonna say publicly at a public meeting. And then we cannot stress, who's heard of the PSC before, like, wow, that's really, that's been way more than most people. So the Public Service Commission are like the five most important people in your life that you've never heard of. They are the people that set your utility bills. Yeah, we haven't elected them in the state for six years because of an ongoing set of lawsuits. Two of them are now up for election in November. I am a nonpartisan organization, but I can tell you, you need to vote in November, right? It's very important. Also, just honestly, you should vote every November, that's what we should do, right? Yes, always vote. So remember to vote for your PSC representatives. And so anyways, we want them to be good neighbors, not gonna lie. I also use ChatGPT. It's like, we need to have like therapy about this now, but like, they're not going anywhere. But as a person who, who used to be an electrical engineer a long time ago, these guys are not trying because we're not making them. We are literally doing data centers like the Russians fight land wars. We're just throwing bodies at it. And if we don't make them pay for it, they're not gonna try. And honestly, we put people on the moon, we can make data centers more efficient. So that's all I have. Wait, we've got 12 minutes.
On the county question, the city council, careful. The city council refused to annex that 1,000 acre, the ground that Harrelson's got.
I remember it.
So that's up to the county commissioners, so yeah, you need to tell them your donations and.
The whole question, giving the bank away, where's the property tax relief that so many people need?
That'd be a good question for your elected officials, so.
Three people make all the money.
Thank you, thank you all for coming out tonight. This is an exciting night, there's a lot of people. I took a few, wrote a few notes. I'm old enough to remember the comic strip, Pogo, you know? We are the enemies, but we've met the enemy, it's us. So, you know, we've called, collectively, we've kind of caused this conflict, but they don't even know it. And that's how a lot of businesses kind of create business, by offering us products that we didn't even know we needed. Bottled water, didn't you remember filling up a bottle when you were younger? Now what are we gonna do with all that plastic waste? We can't figure it out as a population, how to recycle that heck of a glass of plastic. So businesses do business with a public license. We learned that, so contact your representatives to ask, you know, what are we doing here? Is this helping us? So it's gotta be good for us. It's gotta be definitely good for us. $8 billion investment, why did they not think this was an important opportunity to bring to the public? Why did they make this deal so quickly under, I mean, they would have open meetings, we just weren't paying attention. I recognize that. But wouldn't they have thought that this could have been something that they might have asked people about? Instead of just moving forward like it's the same old, same old? What was key?
What was Kia, a billion dollar project? No, I don't know. This dwarfs any other investment in this county, and they are proud of it. They're proud to ram that down. So, um, so we don't want vague promises. The, uh, city, uh, manager says, you know, they're gonna do good stuff for us. What, we're gonna have a float and a Christmas parade? Yes, thank you much, let's put it in writing, let's put it in writing, let's have a contract, let's have a stronger contract. So businesses avoid costs by pushing costs to the public. Isn't that right? So, the prime example is, uh, the tobacco industry, right? They push those health costs onto the population. They sold us something we didn't think we needed to, we got picked into it. So they push costs to the public, health is a cost. So when they've got loud plants, when those eighty diesel turbines are gone and all the fans are blown, whenever they need to run those, whenever they choose to run those, when the power's out, whenever, we don't have a choice on when they run those. We're gonna have to hear that, it'll be stress related to noises, and to lights. We don't want orange skies like Atlanta has, we want a night sky. Why do they have to light up the world for these plants that are building? So, you know, the water, we're gonna have to build, we're gonna, I think the city manager will tell us that they've got enough infrastructure to supply water for this plant. But there's gonna be maintenance, there's gonna be upgrades that they're gonna have to do, that we're gonna pay, so that they can keep running. You know, it's a disproportionate, a disproportionate cost borne by us for a corporate entity that's making more money than they don't know what to do with for their stockholders. So, why won't they be upfront with it? Why won't they tell us what they're gonna do, when they're gonna do it, why they're doing it? And, and, and get a little feedback from us? But we've got a ten thousand acre industrial park in our county, how'd that, how'd that pass? How'd that go, go along? I mean, it stretches from Hogsall all the way down I-85, it's got all kinds of residential neighborhoods all in it. That's, these are things we need a little more control over. So I encourage you all to get involved, there's some signup sheets in the back. If you just want some information, many of y'all signed that already, we appreciate that. Um, and if you wanna take a more direct role, we can certainly, there, there's signup sheets for that. So there'll be time for questions immediately after my talk, which is, uh, thank you very much for coming again.
We're gonna take, we don't have any time, but we're gonna take like five questions. We're trying to reach our max.
I have, I have one thing to say, I don't know how many of you have looked this up, but just last week, I went to good old ChatGPT five, and I asked, how many data centers, or are there data centers out there that are already reducing their amount of noise, their light, their water usage, their electricity consumption? Who is it, um, list me examples of the data centers that are already being better neighbors? How much it costs, what the cost comparisons are for them to make those upgrades? And then list it all out, and it's amazing what is out there. There are, there's Google, there's Meta, there are even the ones that will rent out to some other data center, all these investors. And they are out there already doing mitigations. They can make a dark sky requirement for the data center. They can make it use, um, air circulated cooling instead of water circulated cooling. The technology is there, there are data centers around this country, not let alone Europe, who are using these technologies to mitigate the consumption and the waste that comes out. And I, at our next Sierra Club meeting, I'm sure I'm gonna present this and share it, because it's a vast repertoire, because I always wanna know what's the solution, what are our possibilities? We can go talk to our people and say, or demand accountability from them, but we can also say, look, this data center does this, that one does that, it costs them this much more to do this, and that much more to do that. What can we demand here, so that we don't have as much, uh, problem going on here? And that, to me, is a really clear avenue for solution, that's all I wanna say.
Thank you, all right, ma'am.
Can't hear the question.
I will repeat the question, I promise.
Get the community, get the community to be able to get involved in making a decision on whether we're gonna raise up the power or not. Um, how do we go about that, what's the quickest route, what do we apply pressure to? Also, I would just like to say, for anyone who's concerned about this, how it may affect your property, um, my name is Cindy Hutchings, my husband and I were directly impacted by the one that was built in Fayette County by Georgia Power's need to, um, add more transmission lines and substation to run power to the data center that was built in Fayette County. We had to sell our own because of it, that's why we're in LaGrange now. Um, we were disgusted to get here and find out that it's now happening here. So if anyone has questions about our experience, feel free to contact me or come up to me.
All right, uh, so a quick recap, Cindy here is a refugee from Fayette, um, sorry. Uh, so she was escaping the, the data center there, and now she, welcome. Uh, anyways, uh, second, her real question is, is how do we, what's the quickest way to a moratorium? The quickest way to a moratorium is to call the LaGrange City Council and tell them you want a damn moratorium. That's pretty much it. Uh, they will tell you you can't, because that requires work, and then you will say, yes, you can. Um, so there are your elected officials, and you will tell them that you want a moratorium, and if they say they don't have one, you can call me, because I have ten examples. Chris has another ten examples, there are so many examples floating around the store. Um, so just contact us, but yes.
And those examples are in Georgia?
Yes, we have examples in Georgia, um, that are very good, all right.
One more question.
Uh, you get to pick the person then. Thank you so much, so much, don't worry, I'm gonna hang out.
I go, sorry, this first guy's all.
All right.
Is anyone, my name's Dr. Chapman, I like to look at things from a health perspective. Is anyone looking at the health impact to the people in these neighborhoods themselves?
Oh, great question, so Dr. Chapman, wanting to know the health impacts. Uh, quick survey of the health impacts, um, depending on where they're located, but, uh, there is a lot of light pollution, and there is a lot of noise pollution. So two things you need to make sure of is keeping the lights pointed down, and then measuring the noise levels around the thing, because, um, noise pollution, which we don't think about, can, can drive you insane, like, literally insane. So you need to be very careful about, like, a low level hum will just make you batty. So, um, but thank you for bringing that up.
I think that's something you need to look at in terms of data and be correct as well?
Yeah.
Because that cost is they push back on.
Don't worry, we have sample ordinances that require light and noise abatements and monitoring. See, we got you, the ordinances, all right, apparently we have to stop now?
Well, no, sorry, your city council is here, and they want to know, uh, does, will this increase your power bill?
Yes.
Question from the city council.
The question from the city council is, of course it will increase your power bill.
Is that indirectly or directly?
Directly.
Both.
And what's the time, what's the time frame?
Uh, now, I'm sorry.
So you're saying, so you're saying as soon as the data center goes online, hang on a second, so you're saying as soon as the data center goes online, people will start to see their utility bill increase, rather indirectly or directly from the data center? And, and I'm, I'm just here for information, I'm af, I'm just here just to ask questions, I'm not trying to be smart or anything, I'm just here to be informed, so I can let people know.
All right, well, let you-
Will, will the system require RODI or?
Hang on, hang on, let, let get their question first.
All right, hold on, one, we're gonna answer the electricity bill first question, sir, yes.
Data centers, data centers, in Plattsburgh, New York, I'm from New York State, I've been down here about ten years. Their utilities, water, everything triples. It's no lie, they have a moratorium in place right now to stop any more of them coming in. People don't realize, like, Diverse Power buys seven hundred and fifty thousand megawatts from a company, because I work for a company that supplied this stuff, at a certain rate. Once they use that up, you have to buy it off the grid, the open market, that's usually two to three times more cost. On your utility bills now, you have no purchase power on that. Just because you buy it from Diverse, they use the power that they, they buy wholesale. Mine in New York, I always had a purchase, purchase power. My house in New York, since I left, with, with the stuff coming in, the utilities is tripled. Diverse Power buys seven hundred and fifty thousand megawatts from a private, well, from, from, it's under contract. They, this is in twenty twenty-three, that's the newest one you get. To date, it's twenty twenty-three, they use seven hundred and twenty-two thousand of them, they sold to us and other industries. With the housing coming in here, these new buildings coming in, and small factories coming in, they're gonna eat that up. You put this on top of that, you're looking for three times your utility bills within five or six years, probably, it's ending up.
Okay, um, Gage can help it. Gage gets the answer.
Hey, Gage.
So, with the question in terms of rising utility bills, yes, they will absolutely go up. Now, as explained by our own city manager, Patrick Bowie, in a LaGrange Daily News article that was published back in March, when he was asked, uh, about this by city councilman Tom Gord, about whether or not utilities will increase, he said, yes. Now, the reason is because although your direct costs, like new transmission lines, the improvement of old ones, uh, substation infrastructure, and all the other direct costs that you would need to build these data centers and to keep them running, although the companies are responsible for paying those and will pay for those direct costs indirectly, it's gonna put more load on the generation, where you need more of the megawattages, more of the water to power the data centers. Those indirect costs will be responsible by us, we will be the ones paying for them. And that's, that's not coming from me, that's coming from the city manager.
All right, I'll do that. Um, okay, wow, all right, you have the question about water.
Yes, uh, will require RODI water, RODI, are they called, RODI water, reverse that post?
No, it will not require RODI water, okay.
All right, sorry, everybody, but we have hit thirty thirty, I'm gonna be so thankful for the LaGrange library for holding us. Thank you for our speakers, we broke down your party. That's all information for you, if you wanted to go from here, please, hang on till we can stay in touch.
Last thing, is anyone on this list in this room tonight? Ask yourselves, is anyone on this list in your design?